Late, late start here, and I do apologize for that again. If I could have, call the town of East Fishkill Planning Board meaning to order, and if I could have a roll call.
Teresa Golden.
Steve Caswell.
Michael O'Brien.
Lori G.
John Eichman.
Craig Smith.
Jason Pereskeva.
And if everyone would join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have two upcoming meeting dates, one on October 18th and one on November 1st. And we have, I'm sorry, there's one set of minutes for approval, and unfortunately, I apologize because I haven't had time to review these yet. So if we can hold the minutes over, Jeanne and Kathy will hold the minutes over till the next meeting, if that's all right. So the first item on our agenda tonight is an extension of final approval for Hunter's Ridge. This is an eight lot subdivision on Devon Farms Road, originally approved in 2012.
Everybody knows this project. We've been in front of the board a number of times, asking for an extension of final approval.
We may have a few new members since the last time we saw it, so...
This is an eight lot subdivision that is at the top of Devon Farms Road. It was originally a nine lot subdivision. It was phased, phase one, phase two. Phase one involved the separation of one building lot, and phase two was the balance of the project, which involved eight residential lots, a small town road, I want to say about 650, 700 foot in length, terminated in a cul-de-sac. And this application, just to give the board a little bit of history, began in '05 and made its way through the ups and downs of the market. Final approval was secured a number of years ago, and just due to market conditions, the applicant has been asking to extend final subdivision approval. We have Board of Health approval, we have all of our DEC approvals. It was a matter of waiting till the market kind of got back into a situation where lot costs justified as road construction. And recently, the market hasn't turned as quickly as we anticipated, and the applicant has explored avenues of trying to have them out in a situation where it could be filed with the county clerk's office, so we are done with this process with the planning board, the individual lots would be created. In order to do that, the applicant has to post recreation fees, inspection fees, and the biggest thing is the performance bond, which covers the costs associated with the construction of the road. And being that the applicant is not a developer, he doesn't have a construction background, the ability for him to become bonded has become an issue. Even putting the property up as a type of collateral, the way the banks view that is the applicant would have to come up with even more cash, because the property doesn't appraise to cover the amount of the bond. So, about this time every year, I come before you, begging for mercy for another year of subdivision approval. So, in this applicant's circumstance, the ability for him to bond the road in order to fulfill the requirements of subdivision approval, that is the hang-up, and that's why we continually come back before the board. Understanding the severity of the situation with the board and their intent at the last couple of meetings that we've had with this, the applicant is here tonight, and again, we are asking for another year extension of final approval.
So Brian, what will that year provide?
If we, at the end of the last meeting, this time last year, we took a step back with the applicant, and we looked at avenues to look at the piece differently. We looked at reducing development, we looked at a four lot subdivision, we looked at alternatives to try to see if there's something we could do to get away from the requirement of a town road and a bond, even though that meant coming back to the board. The applicant needs to get four lots to try to get out of this somewhat financially. I know the board doesn't care about that, but there is a flag lot law provision that affects this lot indimentially. The lot count we could probably get is three lots, or two lots, sorry. So we even looked at possibly manipulating or seeking town board approval to tweak the flag lot law, but at the end of the day, it just didn't make sense. So we're at the position now where the applicant is going to try to aggressively pursue a partnership with a local construction company or a local land developer to come up with a situation where a bond can be posted, we can move this forward and file the map. I don't, that's where we are right now.
Just curious, I mean, how much in fees have you paid to get this far? If you go back to square one...
The...
You might be back at square one, because you have maps already drawn.
It starts all over again. We've had, the applicant has paid a lot of money between Espro, between our office, between recreation fees, permit fees, standard, $150,000.
When you were here last year, I think we said this would be the final extension.
Right.
Almost positive the year before, we might have said the same thing.
You've probably said it the last three years, and, you know, I don't, and the applicant is aware of that. And the problem is, is we're, with this application, we're in a situation where we can't fulfill the requirements of final subdivision approval as it relates to the bond aspect. So what we're trying to do is come up, we tried, we talked about creative mechanisms, and we were talking with Scott's office probably a year and a half ago about doing a rolling, a rolling cash bond, have the applicant put up $50,000, we can stage construction, but financially, from the applicant's standpoint, the amount of money, the cash is just not there to post a bond cash-wise, put the road in. It's just, numbers-wise, it just didn't make sense.
How much is the bond going to be?
I think we're about $750,000, and that takes in prevailing wage for construction costs of the road.
How much does the road cost to build?
If you look at the prevailing, 750 is the number.
Is it 750?
I mean, it's, obviously, that's, it'd be slightly less.
Right.
You know, from a private standpoint, but, you know, back in, back in 2005, when this application rigid, you could probably put a road in for $300 a foot. It's now triple that. Regulations have changed, pipe sizes have changed, there's more oversight on the road to make sure it goes incorrectly, so there's contributing factors to the cost of the road.
Brian, it's been a while since I've looked at the actual subdivision itself. Do you have wetlands on this site?
We don't have any wetlands on-site. There is a New York State DEC stream corridor that's below the site.
Okay. Did any, was the buffer of that on your property, or?
There is a slight encroachment of the buffer on the lower end of the property. We did show it to be...
Away from your building envelopes, away from the road?
Away from the building envelope, it was shown to be fenced, I believe, or some kind of monument put in place to show a 50-foot offset from center line of stream.
Okay. Any other environmentally sensitive lands, steep slopes or something like that? They wouldn't have changed, right?
There were steep slopes on the plan, but they're toward the northern section of the property where no development is proposed.
I'll be honest with you, I mean, you know, I hate to string things along for, you know, basically speculative interests and that kind of thing, but I understand, that's not what's going on here, and this is four and a half years coming out of the deepest recession since the, since the depression. I mean, I, I really don't want to send these guys away.
Right, and this is not just, this is just not this town, we've also experienced this in other towns, town of La Grange, town of Wappingers, we're all in the same boat, as you would say, in this extension of approvals. I know other towns, to show that there's some kind of good faith, there is a fee that's associated every year that goes to a reapproval, just to show that you're moving forward.
I don't think we're looking to exacerbate the issue here.
But you could have brought dessert.
Michelle, what is the purview of the board here with a request like this? Where, I know last year, we said, this is the last one, we're hearing similar story, but potentially a different approach from the applicant to try to gain the bond funding. Is it our purview to decide whether or not we grant this? Do we have to grant in one-year extensions? Can we grant in shorter increments? What's our purview?
Yeah, you can definitely grant in shorter increments, and I think it's up to you how you want to approach it, but I think, absolutely, you could, you could do a six-month extension, you can do a year extension, you can do a two-month extension.
Brian, are you already talking to a construction company?
We've been talking to construction companies for a couple of years.
Any bites, anything? I mean, in a year, in six months, a year?
I'm going to tell you right now, if it's six months, we're back again, I'm back again graveling.
That's what I'm wondering, I mean...
But is it the same in a year? I mean...
But, let me ask a question.
I hope it's not.
There's been no significant new regulations or anything that have kicked in in the last four years, right?
Well, that's where I was going to go.
So it's not like certain other requests that have, you know, claiming they're grandfathered out of a lot of the other stuff that's happened, I mean...
Well, there's the stormwater update.
The regs were updated.
Yeah, your stormwater.
The stormwater regs were updated, but we do have an NOI filed on this application and the next application, so those standards do hold.
I did get granted the extension.
Scott, did you hear that?
Yeah.
Did you hear what Brian said?
They hold because we're granting the extension, but the condition of granting the extension, I mean, I don't know if you want to take a look to see if there's anything.
All right, but we're going to make them redo everything.
From what I've always understood through DEC, especially Pat Farrakine, because we've done this in other jobs before he left, New York State DEC, but if you have the NOI filed, and you have an NOI that's up to date and current, those regulations do hold at that timeframe that they were designed. We could look into it.
From the timeframe here, we're not...
But I would ask, Pav, who's no longer there, whether the intent was it should last five, six years down the road or not.
I believe that that's still the case, based upon other things that we have been seeing, but if you want to make, if you're inclined to approve this, that's certainly something that you could make it a condition that we at least investigate that. I don't think, I don't think it's going to change. I think, as Brian says, as long as they did file the NOI, that they should be grandfathered. I mean, I'm sure there's a period with, you know, the DEC where it just keeps going and going and going, I mean, maybe they'll come up with something else, but right at the moment, I do believe that they would still be grandfathered.
And if something does change in that respect, it's, we go through the motions.
I make a motion for a one-year extension. I mean, I, I don't want to be looking at you at six months either. I mean, let's give you...
Why not?
We're going to have the same...
Because...
Seriously, why not? I think we need to know that something is happening.
Okay, so what are we going to do? Just deny, and then they have to start all over again?
I didn't say that.
Okay. Throw out some other options.
One year, then we're having the exact same conversation a year from now. I'd rather have the exact same conversation six months from now and know what's happening.
But I'm not enjoying it.
He's already telling me it's probably not going to happen in six months.
Maybe bring dessert next time.
I'm not eager to have it again.
We got an election year this year.
I'm sorry, that was a joke, just clear.
Drastically improving, especially with an election year here. We're going to be back, we're going to be back here in six months. So what I could do, could do a one-year extension with a six-month update, on where the applicant's at with, with who we're meeting with, just to give you some good faith.
I think, subject to, Pete, can you confirm the NOI for us?
Yes, yep, I can do that.
And then if there's a, what is it, an annual refiling of the NOI? Why, I'm not...
The NOI wants it filed, it's just a yearly fee.
Okay.
Right, they have to pay.
But don't they, doesn't the DEC track whether or not it's still in effect?
But before Joe Dennis left, I gave him the update from DEC. We can email the office up there, and we can provide you correspondence that it's still valid.
Yeah, you have to, I mean, we can even check online, I mean, you can check to see if these, if it's still, like, valid, but I'm sure that you've been paying your fee, it's a minimal fee.
He can prove to us it's valid, we don't have to prove it.
I think we set about to impart a message, I think you've gotten the message, I'm still in favor of a full year.
I'm inclined to go a full year as well, just, the nature of this type of project, six-month increments just fly by too quickly. You know, it's been a couple of years, so...
But what we're hearing is that they're ready, except for the bonding. It's not like there's a whole process with Board of Health still ongoing or anything like that. You have no other conditions left to meet, is that correct?
Everything's, everything's ready to go, it's just the bonding issue. And the economy.
And that's the point, I mean, we don't have the money to put up the bond, so we just could have...
So if this expires, and the applicant refiles an application, then they're subject to today's laws. So each time we extend this by a year...
Well, that's what we just said. What's really changed? Do we know?
But I think that's the point, Scott, isn't it, that some of the, some of the regulations have changed, they're grandfathered right now within NOI.
I would affect this project.
Well, that's what I was going to say, there's effective, there's no wetlands, there's no, I mean, I don't really think we're making a huge environmental decision here.
No, nothing has changed as far as environmental sensitive.
I don't think any of us have looked at the plan to be able to say that.
Could I just say that it may behoove the applicant, when you're in a situation like this, to approach the town 30, 45, 60 days before, to have a sit-down when we could have reviewed it. So tonight, this just got on the agenda, it wasn't even on last week for review, so I don't think any of the professionals had any chance to update on the various things. And you may be perfectly right, there may not be any changes, it may be grandfathered.
I don't know, I'm just...
But I think in the future, anyone who wants to come in for an extension should approach the town a little time before, so we can have a handle on what it is.
That's a good idea.
And I think the ability to...
Rather than debating it the night, of the last night of the extension.
Well, and I, I think the ability to explore whether or not conditions that are left can be accommodated a different way, I don't think in this particular case, that's possible, frankly, but, you know, I haven't pulled out this plan and looked at it again, to know whether there'd be any regulation or anything that would have triggered something different, if it was, if it was submitted today versus, you know, when it was submitted eight years ago, or, I'm sorry, I'm not sure.
Can they do, can you do that work, to show us that there is no significant change?
Sure, absolutely.
And how about we just have them do that?
I would be fine with that.
And then maybe he does come in and...
In six months to do it.
Or maybe, well, maybe not even six months, but maybe he just does that work, comes back to us, tells us, look, here it is on paper, there's no significant change with the new regs, can we get our extension? Or if there is significant, that's up to us, and then maybe we do let it expire, and then...
How long will it take to do that review?
A year.
Does that make sense?
Well, I'm asking for the year extension tonight, if we have to come back in another year, I'd like, I can provide you that information.
Well, I'm saying, if you could provide the information for us.
Do we condition it?
Not tonight, but...
What we're looking for is to have that information before we go and provide an additional year.
We'll let you get us that information before we'll...
How about we do a three-month extension, conditional to that? So I'm doing a whole new subdivision again?
No.
No one's suggesting.
You're just determining whether the new regulations are going to affect it. None of the new regulations, I have to pay him to do today's...
Well, that's a lot less than coming up with $750,000.
But either way, I'll be back, I'll be back here, spend another 150 grand, be back.
No, no, no.
No, that's not what, that's not what anybody's suggesting. Let me just, I'm going to say it a different way. What we're saying is that we know some of the regulations for stormwater, for different things, have changed since you got your original approval. So what we're asking Brian to do is how much, how long would it take him to make an, review your subdivision against those new regulations, to see, would there be any changes? So it could be as simple as, no, here's what the new stormwater regulations are, we already met those, or we don't need to meet those, because this is the number of lots, whatever the explanation is, we're just looking to say, how much of an impact would it be to the town to have this development go about as it's currently approved, versus what would happen if you did have to refile an application because this expired? And if the impact to the town is minimal, because you're already meeting most of the regulations right now, the board would then understand that it makes it easier for us to make a decision to continuously extend a subdivision like this, when we know these regulations change repeatedly. And I think, you know, Brian, again, I, we probably cut you off before you answered how long it would take, but I don't think it should be a huge effort to do that.
No, it's just quantifying and getting dates of local laws when they're...
Are you okay with that?
...on the application came. It's not hard.
I just seen some expressions on your face, like, no, you're not...
Years is really not that long, I mean, what's changed in the last four years?
We don't know, Michael, we, you know, this came in three, whenever it came in, but we're only aware...
There's a new book out there, published by the DEC, an updated book, we have to go and look through which practices is usually...
Done in 2015. Probably not.
Right, and see what the effects are, if any.
So if we put that on him to do, and then we review it...
Then we'll review it.
And then we, I mean, is it okay for us to make a determination based on that, or?
I don't see why not.
Seems logical.
The changes, the changes that the DEC made in 2015 were, I don't use the word "minimal," but they weren't anything, you know, drastic, where it's going to, it's going to really have a major effect on anybody's plan that's already been, like, approved. There may be some, like, minor things, but again, if Brian goes, goes through that, presents some information, then we can work with you guys to say, you know, it's not really going to have an environmental effect, or, you know, maybe like it might, you know, we're not sure yet, so, I don't think so.
But there were faults, I mean, most of that was regulations, you know, just reading the towns and topics and stuff, is all with wetlands, right? I mean, probably 90% of it is wetlands.
Not, not the DEC stormwater regulations, no, they don't have, they don't really have any, anything to do with wetlands.
Okay.
Right.
Again, I don't think it's going to impact anything, but I, I think it's, I think it's a good thing that you at least...
Explore.
Right.
Right, explore, and I think that's, and then...
That gives the board the understanding of the impact of continuing to extend the application versus requiring it be resubmitted.
I don't have a problem with that.
Should I push for it?
You okay with that?
Yeah, give me 60 days to put the letter together, give me 90-day extension, so you have 30 days to review it.
Is that all right, Scott?
We're going to come back at that point.
For sure.
If there's no substantive change, we're going to ask for a year at that point.
Just don't wait till December 28th to send us something.
How many hours do you think it's going to cost, or take, to do that?
This guy's substantial. Substantial.
But with the expectations that if the impact is minimal, that we would...
You're effectively resetting yourself.
Are we resetting it back to next October?
To, right, to a...
Not a year from that date.
I'd make it a year from that.
I think that's the board's decision, I would be indifferent as to which we did.
A double or nothing affair.
Listen, if the economy magic comes back, I won't be here anymore.
Double or nothing.
Double or nothing.
Come on.
So, I had a motion for a 12-month extension, can I have a revision of that motion for a...
Did we vote on the 12-month? I don't think we did.
Not, because there was further discussion.
There's a motion on the table.
That's why I'm asking if we could have a revision of the motion for a three-month extension, to provide the applicant with 60 days to provide us an update on the influence of any new laws since the last, last, original, I'm sorry, not the last approval, the original approval and application, with the intent that the board could then review it and understand the impact prior to making a decision for a longer-term extension.
I amend my...
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. So Brian, 60 days, so for, before the first meeting in December, if you can have something to us, then we can schedule it for the second meeting in December. Okay, the next item on our agenda is Grape Hollow, 11-lot subdivision on Grape Hollow Road.
Next.
Originally approved in 2011, and extended up through October 6th.
This is the exact same conversation.
Okay.
That we just had. This is the applicant, Dave Zuland. Again, here tonight, asking for an extension of a one-year, granting a final approval.
And you have everything on that one?
Is he pursuing bond and all the rest? I mean, sorry.
I can get a bond.
Okay.
I'm a 34-year builder.
Now, as I recall, there is steep slopes on Grape Hollow.
There's steep slopes that are not part of, of any of the lots.
Okay.
They were all, all the lot lines were kind of, went around everything.
How much is this bond?
I'm sorry?
How much is this bond?
I think it's 1.2 or 1.1.
I don't have the votes.
My, my estimate, my prevailing wage estimate, for my improvements, for my, you know, drive my road in my cul-de-sac, was 1.1. A part of that 1.1 was two gates for the, for the stormwater ponds. The gates were $7,400 apiece. I'm a barn builder. I put gates up all the time. They don't cost that much. But, I have to pay inspection fees based on that, and I have to pay bond based on that.
Ouch.
That road, in the long run, that whole, that whole set of improvements and drainage and underwork is going to be around five, six, just under $600,000 to get it in, in reality, if I was to do it today.
So what conditions are yet to be met?
So why haven't you approached the town to ask the planning board to consider a reduction of your bond?
Well, that's what I was just about to ask.
I've been told that if you fall upon deaf ears when you go to Morris Associates, you'll fall on deaf ears. I can get four or five estimates for that whole improvement from four different excavators I work with, up county, down county, Dutchess County, Button County, Westchester County. I've been doing this for 34 years.
Are you aware of any...
Will we get copies of that?
I don't know, I've never, I've never heard anything about Joe Dennis not being, you know, cooperative, you know, with people, so I'm not sure we're...
And they're the consulting engineer, so if you raise this issue, we come to the board.
That's me, that's correct, yeah. The estimate came through at prevailing wages. And that's, and that's the way that it's, you know, supposed to come through. Right, I understand. Okay. Yeah, I completely understand it, but understand that I wouldn't be paying prevailing wages when I had it done, never.
Well, that's true, but the bond is to ensure that the public improvement is complete, and if you default, then the municipality has to do it at prevailing wage, so that's the concept.
Good point.
Yeah.
Look at something new every day.
Right.
So if you have a dispute with the estimate that was in the bond, there was a forum to dispute that before the bond amount was set, before this board, when you got final approval, and certainly, if you think that the market has changed, et cetera, you have every right to petition the board to review the performance bond amount, but we can't do that tonight, because... I understand. Yeah, but you certainly have a right at any time to ask the board to consider a reduction of the bond. And if you are dissatisfied with what you feel is an opinion of a consultant employed by the town, you have every right to bring that to the attention of the board, and the board then will decide if I have it reviewed by another engineer or whatever else. So, you know... Well, again, but you just laid it right out for me. If I was to default, and not follow through with what I was planning on doing... Correct. The bond would have to pick it up, and the town would have to finish the work... Correct. In theory. Correct. Then you'd have to pay prevailing wage, because you're a municipality.
That's why the bond is based on prevailing wage, right.
I got it.
Okay, I would make a motion.
So, I'm, I'm sorry, we're not ready for a motion yet, let's finish the discussion. Brian, what other conditions have not been met yet for this application?
I believe it was just, it was just the bond estimate, was paying the fees, and that was it. We have our Board of Health, we have DEP, stormwater, DEC permit's still in hand, everything's still valid.
Okay.
NOI's been filed, similar to the Hunter's Ridge application, still, still active.
Okay. And you said you're able to obtain a bond, how much time do you need to do that?
I don't want to.
Okay.
I, being, I'm a builder, all right, there's, I have, besides the value of the property, I paid for the property, and I've got another, an additional, almost $600,000 into it now. If I was to get approval tonight, if I was to have all my, you know, my fees in, my downstream, my, my bond, I'd have about $825,000 into it. That makes each, each lot worth $82,000 before you put a road in. So add the road, add the million-dollar road, each lot is now $180,000, which is the absolute silliest thing in the world you could do as a builder, at this time, at this date. They're not worth that kind of money.
How is this affordable?
They're not. They're not. I mean, it's just not, it's dollars and cents, it's not worth that kind of money.
All right, so let's go through the same process we went through with the previous. I know the two applications aren't the same, but I'm gonna ask the same questions.
No problem.
I believe we have wetlands on this site, is that correct, Brian?
Wetlands on site. Wetlands have recently been re-verified and accepted by DEC, DEP.
Same border?
Same border.
Same buffer?
Same buffer.
Okay.
The only thing I have to say is, I have never reviewed this application.
I understand.
So, no, I'm just, I'm just making a statement, because I believe the wetland law and the town, local wetland law, although the state and the federal wetlands may be the same, I'm not sure that the town wetland law was in place when this was submitted, because it went to place just before I got here. So it's, and I don't know exactly when this one came in. So, it may or may not have been grandfathered.
Do you know whether or not you were grandfathered, off the top of your head? If you don't, it's not a problem, but do you know?
I don't think this application was.
Okay.
As far as town wetlands go. The, the topography of this, this piece is fairly unique. It's basically a hill surrounded by state wetlands.
Right.
So, as far as there being any wetland, isolated wetland pockets within a developable area, there's nothing there. It's, it's basically surrounded by DEC wetlands, which we stayed away from, and that wetland line hasn't changed, but...
Right, and I recall we had some pretty heavy-duty silt fencing and things like that to ensure there wasn't gonna be runoff into the wetlands from the...
Yeah, and this also went through a fairly extensive DEP review, because we're in the watershed.
DEP reduced your lot count by one, right?
No, that was a...
DEP.
That was Office of Parks and Recreation.
Archaeological, they did that.
Because, it's refreshing.
Pottery shards.
Let's go back. This application got preliminary approval in, I think, '05, '06, right before the moratorium. That's when we had our big local law change, as far as environmentally sensitive lands. At that time, it wasn't, we had our, we had, I think we had a 12-lot layout, and we went down with 11-lot layout through shaking up with Board of Health, DEP. When we got a DEP stormwater, DEP asked us to channel our discharges from our two stormwater ponds directly to the wetland, which was through the DEC wetland buffer. We had to go and pursue a DEC permit for wetland buffer disturbance. At that time, that triggered the Office of Parks and Recreation review to secure the DEC permit. We went through that motion. It was either do more review or lose the lot. So that's when we went from 11 down to 10. So that's how we ended up with that issue resolved.
If you recall, they had gotten final approval for 11 from this board.
Right.
With conditions, DEP reduced it. They had to come back for you to grant an amended final approval for 10 months.
So we should have actually corrected our agenda to say 10 lots, I apologize. Okay. Brian, you've got, there's a cul-de-sac for this, or was it a road? Cul-de-sac, and you've got the wetlands on site. I have the same question for you. How would this subdivision be impacted with today's laws if you were re-filing for approval today? And is that something you can quantify for us?
I haven't looked at it yet, but it's probably gonna be different than the last application.
It's probably going to be?
It's gonna be different than the last application.
More impact?
Worse, or...
I don't know if it's worse, I just, I think this was...
Just a different design?
This is, this was one of the last applications to get preliminary approval before the moratorium, and the moratorium is when all the new regulations and local laws came into effect.
Environment-sensitive land.
Oh, boy. They still went through the regular DEP.
Might be cheaper to put up the bond.
This one's a tougher one for us, because you definitely have an impact here. To continue to, this approval without the development... Because what you're saying right now is that if this expired when you re-filed it, you couldn't re-file the same subdivision.
I don't, I don't know if it has, because again, this is a unique map. I'd have to take a look at it. I just know that this was grant, this was the last application before the moratorium. And again, this is a very unique situation where the development is kind of centralized on the piece, and we're away from steep slopes. I don't know until I qualify.
When was this first proposed?
2005?
That's what you said, 2005. Can you tell us about what, what had transpired between 2005 and 2011? How that went down?
Lot of permits.
2011 was the final approval. In other words, how did you go from putting something in and it taking six years to get...
You really asking that question?
What?
You're really asking that question?
Yeah, I'd like to know just major influences.
2008.
Pardon?
We weren't being aggressive about it, because you couldn't, it wasn't like you could own a lot.
Okay, so it wasn't, it wasn't, it was purely the economy, that's what I was, versus DEP or any other, because again, that is DEP watershed all up there.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Requesting involved agency hangups and...
Yeah, that took a little while, too.
Takes some time. I think this is the last subdivision to get approved in DEP watershed that I can remember.
Yeah.
So it, it's a combination of, largely driven by economy.
All driven by economy. You can't...
I got it. I just wanted to make sure there wasn't...
You had said you figured around 180 a lot to...
If, if I was forced to find, to finish the subdivision, or give it up.
Right. No, to finish it.
It'd be $180,000 a lot, by the time the road got in.
So, I mean, in your mind, when do you think that market's gonna come back?
Honestly?
No, it's a loaded question.
No, it's not. It's not a loaded question. Halfway through 2018, the market's gonna start to come back. 2019's gonna be a fantastic year. You heard it here first. And I should've got dessert.
I hope you're right.
Sorry about that.
So you really need a three-year extension for that to come around, right? That's the reality.
That's the reality.
And as you say it.
Yes, sir.
In your optimistic view of things, yeah.
Yeah, I'm inclined to ask the applicant to do the same thing here, which is quantify what the impact of the town would be if this was re-submitted under today's laws, guidelines, regulations. So we understand what we're approving, and provide you with a short-term extension to give you time to do that. That's my inclination, others may have a different opinion.
Some of them need a little bit more time on than the last one.
Six months, and you need to submit it, and give us probably a little bit more time to review it as well, because this one's got a different topography than the last.
So I...
You understand what we're saying, that we, we need to understand the impact of the town, of allowing this to continue as it was originally approved versus what it would look like today if it was approved under current law. So, I'm not looking for you to write or submit, you know, 500 pages of something, just a summary of what you think the main changes might be would, is really what we're looking for, and then the town can review it.
So I would propose...
So, he, he could say, if it comes back in six months, that's gonna be a major impact.
Right.
And we're at the point where we're good at tonight, and he can turn around and say, no, I'm putting up the bond.
Certainly his option. Yeah, absolutely. If we extend this, then it's absolutely his option to put up the bond and meet his conditions.
Is it gonna cost more to just let it go, or to put up the bond?
That's a fair comment. Do you know what we mean by what we're saying, or...
How does that benefit the town?
That's what I was just getting at.
I'm sorry. How does what benefit the town?
Does that decision benefit the town?
Understanding whether if you had to resubmit today, this would only be a five-lot subdivision versus a 10-lot subdivision?
65 acres.
I'm not arguing with you. We don't have anything in front of us. We haven't actually seen this. There's members of the board that have never seen this before. So what we're asking, Brian, to do is provide the board, the board with a summary of, this is what the application would look like today. Here's how it would be different from what you, we're asking for an extension on. And again, I'm not looking for war and peace, I'm just looking for the summary.
Not at all.
No, seriously.
You are really asking for a three-and-a-half-year extension, and for us...
In the reality of it, it doesn't make any business sense at all to throw my retirement away.
Yeah. So, what we're saying is, six months, we get...
Submit within four.
A brief, a brief summary of what's changed, so we really understand if we do kite this thing another two-and-a-half years after that, what we're really doing.
If, 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 if it comes back, I just have a question in theory. If it comes back with all different size, different amounts of stormwater retention, different sized pipes, different sized drainage, different asphalt, whatever code is, whatever it is. If it comes back, I'm gonna have to go up to grade, I'm gonna have to go up to current specs to, to be able to get my extension for the 2019.
What would happen is, what would happen is, the board would have the ability to make an informed decision about whether or not we're comfortable continuing with the subdivision as it's currently approved, in its fourth, fifth, or, and/or sixth years of extension, or whether we feel, no, this is, you know, at this point, we really should redo this because there's such a large impact, and the potential drainage issues it might cause or other impacts to the town.
I completely agree with you.
Because while this is old now, think how old it'll be in three years.
So, in 2019, is the lot still gonna cost $180,000?
No, it's gonna cost more than that.
So, to what extent is the...
But the market will support that.
When you said different pipes and all the rest of that, to what degree, you, you haven't...
Oh, the underground, the, the 1.1 million dollars right now, in, in the estimate from Morrison Associates for my site improvements, not, no houses, just the site improvements.
But wait a minute, are those improvements in place?
No, sir.
Okay. I didn't think so. I was like...
No, no, there'd be a bond in place if that was...
The way you were saying that... The way that, that would be, you're ripping pipes up. It was like, no, okay.
Brian, if we made that motion, are you able to comply with that? Is that sufficient time?
Something we can provide us.
Something within about four months, so it would be roughly, I can't do math right now. And roughly, like, early to mid-February, and then April, it would expire in April, beginning of April? All right, give us enough time to review it. This one's a new one for several of us.
Motion for a six-month extension contingent upon an explanation of the changes against the updated codes.
Or completion of all existing conditions and submission for your, of the map.
What she said.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is the, an adjourned public hearing for the Stuart Scott subdivision, six lots on Warren Farm Road. And I believe we don't have a member, a representative from the applicant here, or Michelle, do we have, I'm sorry. We weren't sure if the applicant was gonna be able to be here. Okay, we do have a letter from the applicant. It's for board members, it's in your packages tonight. They've stated that they, I'm sorry, before I put this on the record, do I have a motion to reopen the adjourned public hearing for Stuart Scott?
So move.
Second.
A motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we have a letter in our packages tonight from the applicant requesting to be moved to a later agenda, because they're going to change their subdivision plans. There, it looks like they're looking at now a four-lot subdivision versus a six-lot subdivision. So what that means is that we kind of will need to go back, and Michelle, I'm just, Michelle... Sorry, can I? Were we talking about Stuart Scott?
Yep.
Okay, so, I'm, I believe since they're going to be submitting new plans, we may need to recirculate if they were interested in involved agencies, and I think we need to adjourn the public hearing to a date uncertain until we have the revised plans and we can put the applicant back through a discussion process.
Yep.
So before I ask for a motion for that, is there anyone here knowing that there's nothing new, and that the applicant is gonna be submitting brand-new plans, that wants to speak for the Stuart, Stuart Scott subdivision application? Okay, then do I, do I have a motion to adjourn the public hearing for Stuart Scott to a date uncertain, with the understanding, and with the applicant's understanding, that this will need to be read advertised at the time where they've got a plan ready to be brought back to us?
So move.
I have a motion and a second. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, thank you. Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. So the next item on our agenda is a discussion for Hudson Valley Wine and Spirits on Clove Branch Road.
Good evening to the board.
Hello.
How are you?
Hello.
So I can assure you guys, we're not gonna ask for any extensions tonight.
I think we appreciate that, but if you needed one, we would be welcome, welcome you to request one.
I do have a DVD.
Okay, great. Michael, this was, this was on the agenda in July, that I was not here for, so I know there were a few follow-up items that we had requested from this applicant, is that correct?
Yep.
Okay.
You want me to walk you through, or you're gonna...
Yes.
Just give me a second. So if you want to just refresh our memories on what you're looking for, why are you here?
I'm the owner for the property, for Cory Properties, and we're actually renting this spot to Mark Cory, my brother, who is the president of Hudson Valley Wine and Spirits. This location is a unique location. The storefront was empty for many years. It used to be a car stereo place, and then I think it was an awning place. So when we bought the property, we tried to rent there, we couldn't rent there. So we came up with the idea of doing a farm-themed wine and spirit shop. We contacted the town, and they said it's authorized to be that type of retail. So we went ahead and got approved from New York State Liquor Authority to, to sell liquor and wine and spirits. We applied for the build-out permit, and then we were referred to the ARB. We met with the ARB a couple times. We marked down all their suggestions, what they wanted us to do with regards to, we added a window, a door, painting in the front, minor things, nothing major.
Are you done with the ARB now? Have they given you approval?
Yes. Yes, they, everything that they suggested, we, we actually marked it on these plans, and we actually did some of the work. We did get approved for the build-out permit. Currently, inside the store is complete. As you can tell, my brother's stained hands from staining wood the last week. But, we went ahead and hired a, a good friend of ours of the family, an engineer who just drew up something for us. We found a survey, we plotted out some stuff. I met with Michelle once, and we kind of brainstormed what, what would ideally be best for the location, and expedient, and cost-effective, because my brother does not have deep pockets to, you know, to, you know, throw too much money on the outside. But, the main concern was the dumpsters. Even though our project didn't deal with the dumpsters, the dumpsters are for the deli owner in the front. Our location is strictly just boxes, boxes that go on the retail floor, and when you use them, they come and they take the actual boxes back. So it's 100% recyclable. But we did, you know, the ARB did want to address the dumpsters, which brought us for the board, because it is a change on site.
Okay.
So what we proposed was, where you see the blue marking, actually, what's there now is, if you ever walk the site, it's ripped up blacktop, some gravel. It looked like it used to be parking there.
Okay.
So what we're doing is just re-cleaning it up, adding the parking spots, and at the end, enclosing the dumpsters. So we added that.
Are you actually repaving it, or just putting in like tire blocks to indicate where
Yeah, well, the, the current place that's actually paved already, we're fixing the potholes, resealing it, restriping it, and adding the handicap signs.
Okay.
It's there now. It was striped before, but it's all faded.
Okay.
So we're gonna reseal it, restripe it, clean it up. And then, the blue portion, there's old, I mean, if, if you walk the site, you'll see it's all ripped up, old blacktop, almost like it was never used, and grass grew through it. So we're actually gonna repave that, and then enclose the dumpsters. And, and we talked to the ARB, we're gonna enclose the dumpsters to match the building.
Okay, and that paving is, is currently part of the existing site plan. It's not that you're paving new areas, it's that you're just fixing the paving that's deteriorated.
It's kind of weird. If you go to the site, I know if you look at it now, it looks like mostly grass, but if you actually walk the site, you'll see patches
You can see it?
Of blacktop, gravel, dirt. Really, the only thing we might be extending is where the dumpster's at the end, that's all grass. So that's, either we're gonna put a cement, I think we were blacktopping, I apologize, blacktopping that extra portion and putting the fence around it. And the fence is gonna be the vinyl fence to match the building.
Okay.
I think we also added, the ARB was okay with us adding the awning, and due to time restrictions, the awning was actually added yesterday.
And by the way, all the changes, I'm sorry, all the changes you're discussing or reading to are for the entire building, not just the two-story section?
Yes, I apologize.
So, just, no, that's fine, just making that clear.
Yeah.
Because it is really one building, right?
It is one building.
Both, but there's not gonna be any change to the business in the front?
No.
Okay. Nor is there gonna be any change to the, what's, what's labeled as loading and delivery, that, that drive-through?
Correct. Yeah, that's, that's for the deli up front. If, I don't know if this picture shows it, but the, the deli's up front, and then that section in the front, which is loading for delivery, on delivery, there's a door to the back right of the deli. So that's where all his deliveries come in. But that's also gonna be sealed, we're gonna seal and pave, not pave, seal and stripe and the whole, the whole site.
Okay.
But really, our purpose started with just the side of the building. The awning went up, there was an old awning there, didn't meet the height requirements. The, the new awning went up a couple days ago, it's, it meets the height requirements. And really, that's, that's pretty much it. We're just trying to clean up the site, make it presentable. I know there was a concern with site circulation.
Right.
So, I know one of the...
That's gonna be my next question, so...
So one of our suggestions was, on the last meeting, was to kind of add barriers on one side. Our, the person that we dealt with said it might be a good idea, and again, we're open for if, whatever, you know, the suggestion is, we'll do it. As, as an idea, we kind, he, he wanted to put like a, really, it's a very decorative, like, it's like a concrete planter box, and this way you could kind of, I don't know if I can go back to the other picture.
Sure. The original site, right?
Yeah, if it shows like the...
Thank you, Michelle.
Thanks, Michelle. There it is. I wish I had a pointer. But if you look at, in the middle where Clove Branches, we, he added the planter as an idea, and as we stripe it, on the left side, you see the arrows going in and out. That will direct traffic, if they want to park for the deli. On the right side of the planter would be traffic toward, for the liquor store.
There's a planter, existing planter there now, on the corner?
No, no, there isn't. It's, it's wide open.
I was gonna say, it's grass right there.
Yeah, yup. Well, yeah, there's a, to the right, if I'm looking at the screen now, to the right of the planter, there's blacktop and then there's grass.
No, not that, I'm talking to the left.
There's an L shape, where the little planter is that says proposed, there's an L shape that says it's an existing planter, that is there now?
That's existing there, yeah, those are road ties, I think.
Okay.
It definitely doesn't extend as far as you're indicating here.
No, 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 it does not extend.
There's no, you know, it doesn't extend.
No, no, we're not extending what's existing there, the only thing we're adding is this. Now, the Central Hudson came out there just to, just to inform the board, the current location of the pole, they're moving it, I guess they're updating the poles and the lines, so the new pole's gonna be pushed back further, so, which is gonna help us with regards to cars parking or, you know, or if a truck comes in to get the garbage.
Is there, is there a light on that pole currently, or?
No, no light, no, I know we have lights-
No, there's not, I'm looking at it.
Yeah, there's no light, actually, they went, it was crazy, they went in after, after the first meeting, and they added a second pole, and I said, what the, you know, what the heck's going on here? Then they had two leaders, and I called them up, I said, you guys are killing me, I said, you know, you put two poles, and they said, oh, we're gonna move, I said, no, 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 I said, you know, move the pole further, so this way the leader won't get in the way of a dump truck coming in to get the garbage and all that, so, so they already resubmitted, they already replanted the new pole, and they said that they're just waiting on Verizon and some other wines to move the old pole, so.
Okay.
So that's pretty much in a nutshell.
So you're comfortable that the current proposed, I shouldn't say the current, the proposed location of the refuse enclosure, so where the dumpsters are gonna be, you're comfortable that a truck's gonna be able to get in and out of there-
Yes.
-without any hindrance?
Yes, if you, if you look at the, where the blue section is, the left is parking, the dumpster's more toward the right, and there's enough space for a truck to go that way, there's no parking on that side, so they could easily come in.
Okay.
I mean, compared to where it is now, it's like just thrown on the grass, and so.
This is a major improvement to that location.
Thank you.
All the way around.
Thank you.
The way the building looks and the rest of it.
Thank you, yeah, hopefully, once we get this sealed and striped and, it's gonna look really nice, so, we're really trying, with the limited budget that we have, so.
I know you mentioned potholes, but I believe there's a catch basin that needs repair tools when you park a lot.
Catch basin, okay, is it, yeah, if it needs to fix, then we'll fix it. Yeah, that was part of the, we already contacted the blacktop guy, I said, you know, I've tried to ask him what the deadline is, he says, depending on the weather, sometimes you have until December, so he knows if everything goes smooth, hopefully by the end of October, he's gonna fix his ceiling.
What is right in the middle?
Catch basin.
But we, we can make that condition to fix, you know, the potholes, the catch basin, that's, that's part, that's part of the contract that we, you know, we have with the blacktop company.
For the repaving, okay, or blacktop, okay. So I just want to make sure that I understand everything you're requesting, so I'm assuming, Michelle, we originally-
Yeah, I'm looking, I'm sorry, I'm looking at it on the satellite.
You're looking at the area, okay, I'm assuming we're not checking ballgame scores or anything like that.
Yes, she was, I saw her.
Thank you.
She was, I'm saying.
I'm trying to look at the road.
Morris Associates delivers again.
All right, Michelle, so are we looking at both change of use and minor site plan change, or did this have to be anything beyond that?
No, we were looking at change of use and minor site plan change, yeah.
Okay, all right, so with this as presented, I did ask, we asked Dave to look at it as far as traffic circulation, because we were, there were a couple issues, one where we
were concerned about folks parking and then backing up onto the roadway.
That's for the two spaces in the back, you mean?
Well, actually, at either location, and we wanted them to formalize the parking a little bit more, because originally there was no striping, and we wanted to make sure that the parking was formalized so that people weren't parking in a sloppy way and taking up more than one space, in the event that there were several people parked there at the same time.
Okay.
And then we had the ARB request that the dumpster be more aesthetically pleasing, exactly, yeah, and then we also were concerned about having conflicts with traffic if someone came in off of 82 and Clove Branch at the same time and sort of met, you know, in the middle of the site, and then I think you guys were looking or potentially thinking about putting a sign, but it looks like you've decided not to do that at this time?
Yeah, I talked to, I mean, because we were trying to really get everything in, and it was tough, because he, you know, he's a friend of the family, so we were kind of, you know, getting a discount, him trying to get this together for us, and he said, listen, to meet, you know, we have, I would want to meet with, I told him I'd rather meet with Michelle and kind of, because I know you said the town wants to go in direction for signs, and I said, so later on, you know, we just want to get the place cleaned and open, and then later on, maybe meet with you and come up with the idea, design, and, you know, we're, we're open to, you know, we're not, I mean, our sign is not gonna make or break the business, we would like to have it later, but I would want, spend more time on the design with Michelle and see what the town wants.
And then the other issue was there was no handicapped spaces at the site. But it sounds like you're taking sure, that I can see on the plan, you've labeled a handicap spot.
Is this a wall sign or a monument sign, are you talking about?
He was thinking of putting a monument sign at the corner for the deli and the liquor store.
And it's gonna be lit, or not lit?
That's not happening yet, he's not doing that yet.
Yeah, that's not happening now.
My only point is, if you're gonna be paving and doing repairs, if you need to get electric out-
Conduit.
Conduit, you should be thinking about that now.
I personally, you know, whatever is the town's preference with the sign, because I know, you know, some towns want to gear their signs to a certain look, so we're, we're open to anything, I mean, if it's gotta be lit, we could run it-
Not that it has to be, but-
No, but if you want it lit, it makes sense to run the pipe now.
I mean, in winter time, it gets dark pretty early.
Yeah, and the hours of this operation, per New York's, you know, New York State Liquor Authority and Dutchess County, it has closed at seven, so really, for the most part, it's, it's daytime, except for when we get, you know, in the winter.
Yeah, but in the winter months, it's dark at 4:30, so.
But what about, I'm assuming the deli's probably open pretty early in the morning, right?
They open at, yeah, five in the morning, five, six in the morning, something like that.
Yeah, which would be dark in the wintertime, too, so if you had.
The deli has its own sign.
Oh, has it, okay.
Yeah, he has his own sign on Route 82, and I know the positive thing that came out of this was, we're entitled to a sign on Clove Branch, because it's on two roads.
Okay.
So we're hoping later on, we could-
Was.
Okay.
-adjust the sign issue.
And then the other, just lighting, you have some wall mount fixtures, are they, are they motion detector, or are they just, what are, what are they exactly?
Yeah, that's what I want to discuss with Michelle today, so, per the ARB, we have, where the front door, the deli is, hopefully we'll get back to it.
Scott?
Yes.
Should somebody check that catch basin and pipe?
Catch basin and pipe, or no? Well, I mean, when they take it apart, they'll find out what needs to be done to be repaired, I don't know that we, that we need to, but.
All right.
Question of circulation on Clove Branch Road, in essence, you have, you're proposing two driveways, right, one for the liquor store?
That's what we're closing, but I know Dave, you know, we discussed this, if you want to come on site, you know, we're open to-
I know, we didn't, we were steering away of going for a permit from the county, etc., but the county would allow you a 30-foot access.
Okay.
And in this instance, I suggest, given this, the tightness of the site, that you only have one access.
Okay.
So a 30-foot access, so that means, looking at it, if you extended the planter, the Little Island Planter in the middle-
To the right.
To the right, and just had your one, one, rather than cir, you know, people driving both sides.
Yeah, we were fine with that, I mean, we, we did, did it this way, as just as a suggestion, I know the last-
I understand, I understand, and it's an improvement, but, you know, that would, you know, complete.
And we could, we could add more planters and do like two feet apart or something like that, like to go, because they're very decorative, it's nice, they do like flowers and everything.
The important thing is that we have a channelized access to the site, as opposed to a wide open.
Yeah, that's, I can make that change.
And the other thing was on the loading, delivery area, you're gonna need no parking signs, or is it gonna be hatched?
Um, I think the way he had it was just to write loading and delivery, but I could, when they, when they stripe it, we could put no parking out there, but I think he hasn't labeled the delivery and-
So, so you probably want to be out at the site, though, before they finish any striping or anything, to make sure you're comfortable with the layout, is that correct, or?
Well, yeah, and as I proposed before the meeting, that I'll be willing to meet you on site just to go over-
Yeah, that'd be great.
...the changes, and then, of course, when they're ready to stripe it, would-
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be great.
How old is the original building here?
That's before, before, I know it's a family friend, but the directional arrows, they're not right.
No. All these, yeah.
We drive on the other side of the road.
You mean the, okay.
Oh, they are, you know, the direction.
Yeah, so we gotta switch them.
You mean they were okay for London, but not, okay, I gotcha, I gotcha.
Sure. Scott, we'll switch that.
How old is the original building?
So, from what I gathered, the building is built in the 70s, and then they got, there was, I know when we bought it, we had a meeting with Scott, and we had some CO issues, because there was permits pulled out over the years, and I think the 80s, late 80s, 90s, when the apartment was added and all that.
Okay.
The reason why I was asking is, you know, I remember like back in the 50s, they straightened the road, I was wondering if, you know, why it was built at an odd angle to the road, it's like-
Yeah, and then, goggles mine.
And I'm sorry, can you just go over what you're doing for lighting, because?
Oh, if, Michelle, can I get back to the, that one picture?
Could be, could be.
I don't know.
Okay, so, um, thanks, Michelle, so with the ARB's meeting, what we have is, there's three sconzas, if you look at the door to the left, that's the door to the wine and spirit shop, so there's a sconza on the left of the door, a sconza in the middle, and a sconza to the right of the door, which is the apartment, then up top in the, in the soffit, there's four added lights that point straight down, and then, if you look to the left on top, it looks like a flood lamp, that's just gonna be a, a main, just one fixture that points out toward the parking lot, that, and I figured, you know, we could, if you wanted us to add another one, we could add it, but I thought maybe with the lighting that's in front of the store and that added should be-
Are these lights in right now?
That one in the corner is-
The sconzas are in.
Okay.
The lights inside the, the soffit was, they're not in yet, no, but the ARB approved the four lights, they didn't want too many, too, too little, and there's the light on the building that's there now, we're just changing it to a, almost like a square flood, you know, that just goes on when we turn the lights on outside.
Facing down there.
I don't know if you want me to add another one?
Well, no, I was just saying, maybe I could come out and take a look at it when it's in, to see if it's appropriate lighting for the, for the parking lot, if you can see.
Actually, they're, they should be finishing that up tomorrow, tomorrow, they got minor punchless stuff to finish, like, there's some lighting, he's gotta finish staining a couple shelves, like, little things, but majority of the construction's been done on the inside.
When they're, when the lights are in, when you let me know, and I'll go try to drive by it at night.
That's not something you normally see on a plan.
So that's pretty much it in a nutshell.
Okay.
I'd like to comment, reputed septic area.
Yeah, change it up, kill him, sorry, because he rushed it.
That's all right.
It's fine, it's fine.
For, for what the board was asking you to do, we didn't require that the septic area be eliminated, you're fine, it's just not a word we often see on our plans.
It's not, yeah, it's not a common phraseology here.
Michelle, it sounds like you want to check the lighting, Dave, it sounded like you'd like to check the, the layout of the parking lot, and the, which spots are gonna be striped, et cetera, Pete, is there anything from Morris that's, that you need to do, or anything you're expecting?
Not that I know of.
Okay, so, I think before the board makes a motion, let's, let's make sure that our professionals have done what they need to do, in case they're gonna ask you to make any changes to this, because before we can make a decision, we need to make sure your plan is actually laid out correctly, based on their feedback.
There will be changes.
Okay, well, I know the arrows, but I, I know, but.
So there's not gonna be any, there's no public hearing, no?
It seems like this is, because, because they're, they're substantially in conformance with the existing site plan, they're just restoring parts of it, and again, Michelle, you're gonna correct me if I'm wrong here, but the addition of the new dumpster area and some of the lighting, the ARB approval's already in place, so I'm not sure we need a public hearing for this one.
I agree, I mean, it's-
But I do think it needs to come back one more time, once we know exactly what the layout should be, Michelle.
We really had no as-built for this, so we were actually just trying to memorialize what's out there and make sure that we had the record.
Okay, so what will happen is, meet with our professionals, as we've talked about tonight, finalize those things, so you know that your, your map is final, and then come back to us one more time.
Now, what's the, the next, most available meeting, because we're, depending on whether, and it seems pretty good, the blacktop guy said-
Yeah, I mean, we, we have meetings the first and third Tuesdays of every month, so the next two meetings are October 18th and November 1st, but we can't guarantee one of those agendas until you've finished what you need to do with our professionals, so I don't know what your timing's gonna be.
So when you submit the stuff, we'll figure out the best date for you to come on the agenda.
That's true.
So, try me with you first and then resubmit it, okay?
Yes.
All right, and then-
And make sure you meet with our traffic professional, Dave, too, so that he is comfortable with the parking lot.
Yeah, I'll give you my cell phone, all right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, nice job.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, great. The next item on our agenda is a referral from the town board, Michelle, I believe you had provided the board with a draft of your comments.
So just, just really quickly, I'll try and make this quick, at the last meeting, we discussed this, you guys gave me comments, I just wrote them up as a recommendation to the town board, if you could just take a glance, I think I sent them around to everybody, if you have any comments, let me know, otherwise, I'm gonna try to get them to the town board tomorrow or by the end of the week, okay?
Okay, so, no, this is good.
The only thing I-
I was fine with it, I had already read it, I'm sorry, Mike, go ahead.
The only thing I was, it says a comprehensive review, I mean, I, kind of open-ended, but I'm, I'm fine with that, I mean, I think-
Okay, oh, you mean for the future, to look at other parcels?
Yeah, to look at the comprehensive review.
Well, because ideally, we don't want to have to keep doing this one by one.
Oh, I agree, I agree, but it just, gotta open-ended it.
Any other comments from where, so if you can get back to Michelle before end of day tomorrow, then she can get the comments back to the town board before the end of the week? Okay, and we'll assume silence is golden and consent, so.
That's fair.
Excellent, all right, so the next item on our agenda has several of our members recused, so, gentlemen, thank you.
Who would stick around if you were, if any of your septics were gonna be labeled as reputed septic areas?
All right, so the next item on our agenda is a revision to the negative declaration for Global Foundries US 2 LLC, it's the eight-lot subdivision, and the IBM Corporation groundwater remediation system, you'll see a note on our agenda that IBM did request to be on a future agenda, however, there is a minor change that was also needed for Global Foundries, because our, and Michelle, I don't mean to-
I'd like to try.
-say what you were gonna say, but our original negative declaration, one of you, if you want to come up to the podium, you're fine, but our original neg deck included a table of all of your lots and the sizes and the roads, and those have, as normally happens, not substantive to the subdivision, but they have changed slightly, so that's putting our neg deck a little bit out of compliance, so our suggestion is that since the actual acreages of the lots is not substantive to the neg, neg, negative declaration decision, that we're recommending removing that table from the neg deck.
Okay.
And Michelle, I'm sorry, is there any other change that you've made here, and if you want to just call out the section of the neg deck that was adjusted, I'm sorry.
The only thing was, we originally had described the project as an eight-lot subdivision with four road parcels, and we've now created some additional road parcels, just because of the way it's been laid out, the, the roads are exactly the same, they're just shown differently on the map, as far as ownership and fee parcels, so, at this point, we took, we removed that language from the neg deck, and we're gonna refer to it in the resolution.
Okay, so again, knowing this, the only change was the removal of that table, Michelle, were there any, were there any language changes, or were we able to just remove the table?
I just removed the change, the table, yeah.
The table itself, okay, so with the understanding that we've just removed the table, it was not substantive to the negative declaration, the determination itself, do I have a motion to accept that change to the neg deck? So moved. I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? And Jason, you did vote aye for our record, I'm sorry.
Yes, I did.
Yes, thank you, okay, all right, so with that completed, we also have a resolution, I'm sorry, the next item on our agenda this evening is a resolution for final approval for Global Foundries US 2 LLC, again, the eight-lot subdivision, and this is, Michelle, oh, sorry, again, um, and, and I guess Pete, is there, are there any changes that we need to go over before we offer the final resolution? Tom, I think you mentioned you want to just
We're just going to remove, uh, condition 10. 10, as it was redundant, it's expressed in 4.
With 4, okay.
And that would renumber the final 2, 10, and 11, so there are only 11 conditions of final.
Okay, all right, fair enough. Um, was there any other, um, any, anything else we needed to discuss? I think maybe what I would ask, if it's all right, um, just give us a quick update. I know there've been a few tweaks since we saw this at preliminary, just give us a quick description of what's changed. I know you sent us some maps, I don't know if everybody had a chance to see their maps today or not, but, um, you have the two revised maps.
Sure, I'd be glad to. Um, what was changed was, uh, a, a piece of East Drive was, uh, converted to a, uh, fee parcel, uh, taken out of Lot 5 at the request of the board, and, so that's a standalone piece that could be offered for dedication in the future or at such time was, as is appropriate. Um, also, uh, North Road, uh, was taken out of Lot 2, uh, as far as a fee parcel at the, the town's request, and, uh.
I think that was due to the geometry of the road, is that correct, that it didn't, didn't meet the town?
I think, I think the town felt that that was not something they would ever want to be dedicated, so that's.
It's part of it.
Okay.
If, if I'm correct. Uh, so, uh, so now, uh, there's just a right-of-way surrounding, uh, North Drive, okay?
Good.
And, uh, and then in addition, um, we're going to be adding notes to the plat that, uh, allow for portions of Lot 5 and Lot 2 to revert to the adjoining lots, uh, or, I take that back, a portion of Lot 5 in the future, we, we're putting in a reversionary clause that at such time that Global Foundries or a successor ceases to, uh, perform chip fab, that there's a provision for, uh, this kind of odd-shaped piece with, uh, building 303 and 309 to revert to Lot 2 at, at some point in the future.
Just kind of clean up the lines a little bit.
Yep, and then there's a, a, a portion of Lot 4 that can, currently contains the hydrogen, uh, plant, that at such time when that ceases to be used in, in, uh, that way, that that could re, revert, uh, to Lot 4. That's part of.
What, is in Lot 5 right now by the land hook, is that correct?
Yes, that's right, yes.
That's the piece, okay.
Yes, that's correct. So those are the most substantial changes that were made.
And, Michelle, I'm sorry, did you have the copies of the revised, um, parcel maps? I just, I'm not sure if every, board members did receive this today, um, via email, but you may not have had a, a chance to look at it, so.
Thank you.
We can share, just so the board has a, a quick sense of, thank you, Michelle, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
So this is your land hook parcel 5 that would revert back into this parcel once the hydrogen is done. And, I'm sorry, I'm just showing the, the little land hook here. And then this is the piece right here that would come, come back into Lot 2 once the, um, once, and if the chip fab goes away, this piece would go back into Lot 2.
Kind of same with Lot 4.
Same with Lot 4, this, this piece would revert into the larger Lot 4, the rectangle, right? But other than that, no substantive changes to the, to the subdivision?
No, that, that's really it.
Okay. And then the second page of, uh, what board members have, this is the, this is the portion of the road that was originally going to be offered to the town, that's now going to become a right-of-way, and this smaller piece here will be, um, the green piece up at the top by Route 52 would become eventually a town road.
So the rest of these roads will be town roads then?
I think what you see, and keep me honest, the bottom road here.
That'll be town?
Here, 52 down to that road, and this 52 down to that road, and these two little spurs.
Will all be town.
But that's over time, and you can see by the different colors that they, it won't necessarily be all concurrent.
The, the.
What do we get first?
I'm sorry, the, uh.
South Road.
South Drive would be at the town's option anytime. The others are going to have triggers depending upon what's going on in the site as to when they come over.
Is the town going to take South Drive right away, or?
Uh, that's to, we'll have the right to, it's going to probably deter, be determined by the West Complex.
Right.
Right, but the intent is for that to become the town road and allow the additional circulation.
So are we looking to get the West Complex?
Well, we'll have the same, uh, our contention would be to have the same rights there that we have here. So that road will be fully effectuated as a public road at the appropriate time.
I think it needs to be.
Right.
Especially with the dome.
Correct.
But for this application, it's just that small piece on, at, at the south, on the side of the parcel. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other, I'm sorry, any other changes or anything else that we should mention to the board? I know you've completed some of the conditions from your preliminary approval. Um, we've received a request from you to move many of the conditions that specifically related to the drawing of deeds and, and right-of-ways and easements, reciprocal agreements, that sort of thing, are moving to be conditions of final approval, so none of them being removed, but actually being moved to the final approval.
Can I go back to the roads?
You, you can go back to the roads, sure.
Are the roads up to our standards?
There is a provision that will be in the agreement that provides that prior to acceptance, there'll be an inspection and true, whatever you call that, true-up or whatever to get them, they have, the right-of-ways are larger than what we usually take, the, if the bed of it is.
So if the town, if the roads need to be improved, is it on the town to improve them?
Uh, no, they're, they'll be in acceptable condition when we take them over.
I think.
Okay, so if any improvements need to be made to them.
Yeah.
Yeah, just take a look at condition 8, make sure it says what you want it to say.
Right.
All right.
Just, um, this says road maintenance agreement inclusive of all newly created lots until each road is accepted as public highway. Oh, no, so that's just road maintenance, I'm sorry, so that's not.
Make sure we're not having to pay for taking.
No, we'll, they'll be to, you know, there won't be a brand-new road, but it will be any problems will be addressed.
But it should, it should meet the definition of a town road, right?
It more than does that now, but I.
Right.
The question is, there's going to be some use to it.
Yeah, I think the gates are, are probably one of the bigger items.
The gates need to be removed.
Okay, okay.
There's probably grass grown to a lot of those roads, too.
But it's not like, it's not like the road itself isn't of equality that would be a town road quality.
Crack filling and things like that, yeah.
Okay.
Drainage and all that is okay, and?
I think the drainage is okay, yeah.
Okay. And I think, Tom, the town board's purview before they would accept the road for dedication would be to have probably a report from the highway supervisor or something, right?
Correct, right. That will all be in the office of dedication that are being finalized now, because the one road that, the entrance from Palin Road, that's going to be offered for dedication, but we won't be allowed to take it until their operation ceases because of homeland security issues, things like that. So there'll be conditions that will be approved by the town board in that, whereas the South Road would just be triggered by the town board anytime taken over. So there's different things like that.
Right.
Okay. Any, any other questions or comments from board members? Dave, anything? I think the subdivision, we weren't really making any roadway, I know there's offers of dedication, but there's no, um, there was no traffic study or anything like that required. Pete, anything from Morris?
Uh, we just had a comment letter dated, uh, October, uh, the 3rd, but that's, that's one of the conditions.
Okay, I think that's a condition, right, that's in condition 1.
Housekeeping items that, you know, a lot of the items are already being, you know, worked on, agreements and such, so.
Okay, okay. Michelle, anything from the planning?
No, just, just that we have to, um, just modify the where, the eighth whereas clause to say, um, and amended 10, 4, 16 for the neg deck.
16, and, okay. Good. Tom or Scott, anything else before we offer the res, offer the resolution? Does someone want to offer the resolution? Anyone? You want to do it?
Sure.
All right, thanks, Teresa.
Resolution of final subdivision approval. Name of subdivision is Global Foundries subdivision. Name of applicant is Global Foundries US 2 LLC. The location is 2070 Route 52 in Lime Kiln Road. Uh, we should correct that typo on Kiln.
Yep.
Resolution offered by planning board member Teresa Golden. Whereas the applicant has applied for subdivision approval to create a total of eight building lots and seven, seven road parcels, and whereas this application is the first filed under Section 194 dash 67 dot 3, seeking a special permit to create new lots on a site greater than 150 acres within the I-1 zoning district, and whereas the purpose of the special permit is to give flexibility to the planning board to approve this division of already improved property to foster economic development, and whereas the intent of this permit is to allow previously approved site plans to continue to be utilized even though the site may be divided into multiple lots, and whereas the applicant filed an application for subdivision approval under this special permit on the 29th of April 2016, and whereas the planning board circulated for lead agency status and declared themselves to be lead agency on the 5th day of July 2016 without objection, and whereas a public hearing was duly advertised and held on July 5th 2016 and continued to August 2nd 2016 when it was closed, and whereas the planning board previously on August 16th 2016 adopted a negative declaration under SECA with respect to this application, and whereas preliminary approval was granted on August 17th 2016, and whereas a final, and whereas a request for final approval has been received, and whereas no substantial changes have been made to the map. Now, therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby grants a special per, permit pursuant to Section 194 dash 67 dot 3 of the zoning ordinance and final subdivision approval for an eight lot subdivision on a map entitled.
Signature.
2070 Route 52 Preliminary Plats Subdivision, Global Foundries US 2 LLC, dated April 1st 2016, as prepared by Chaz and Engineering Land Surveying and Landscape Architecture Company, DPC. Said map revised through September 23rd 2016, and be it further resolved that this final subdivision approval and grant of special permit is subject to the following conditions, which must be satisfied prior to the chair signing the map. One, compliance with and satisfaction of the comments contained in the following review letters by this board's consultants. Morris Associates, PLLC, dated October 3rd 2016. A, a, HVE Traffic Consultant dated August 15th 2016. Town Planner's Comments dated May 6th 2016. Two, approval by the town board of a water district on water improvement area to provide public water to the separate lots by virtue of a partial assignment by the applicant to the town of a quantity of water $500,000, $500,000 gallons per day without take or pay provisions to the satisfaction of the town board, Route 52 Commercial Water District. Three, establishment of a transportation corporation with the consent of the town board for s, is that sewerage or sewage?
Sewerage.
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 Yeah.
Okay, whatever it is.
Either one, neither.
For sewage disposal with reserve capacity of 200,000 gallons per day for the Route 52 sewer improvement area and initial reserve capacity of 500,000, of 50,000 gallons per day for the, for the John J. Sewer Improvement Area and sufficient capacity to service all of the lots created herein. Four, a reciprocal easement agreement in the form acceptable to the town attorney, providing for the operation of the entire site as one despite the subdivision, in accordance with the previously approved site plan with provisions for all activities of the site, including but not limited to parking, drainage, lighting, access, stormwater, signage, et cetera. Five, offers of dedication of the proposed roads in a form acceptable to town attorney in terms approved by the town board. Six, approval of agreement between applicant and IBM with respect to the treatment of groundwater on-site through the water, through the wastewater treatment plant as to length of term and capacities in alternate discharge. Seven, South Road will be offered for dedication to the town at the town's option upon terms to be agreed to. Eight, road maintenance agreement inclusive of all newly created lots until each road is accepted as pilot highway, as public highways, see number five. Number nine, prior to final improvement, the applicant shall obtain a building permit and/or demolition permit for the two buildings encroaching over lot lines.
Could I interrupt you if, just on nine, we'd like to propose modification, it'd be.
Can we?
Prior, prior to the filing of the map, the applicant shall provide an engineering analysis and obtain a building permit and/or demolition permit for the two buildings encroaching over the lot lines.
Okay. Three buildings?
That's okay.
Or is it two buildings with one with, that has two encroachments?
It's two buildings, one's coming down and one, well.
Yeah, it's, it's.
It's three encroachments.
Two buildings, but I think there's three connection, connecting points, I believe.
Okay.
Between the two.
The one that's not coming down.
Okay.
Boarding law, and the other one has three links.
Okay, I'm going to have Teresa finish reading the conditions, and then Tom will come back to that and just, um, thank you. Go ahead, Teresa.
10 is deeds and deed restrictions for the subdivision will be reviewed and approved by the town attorney. And 11, approval of the Dutchess County Department of Health.
Okay, thank you. Um, so, Tom, uh, you wanted to adjust condition?
Number nine, uh, we did consult with the New York State Codes Bureau.
Okay.
And, um, under the code, the buildings, if a building permit is issued, that would give them up to one year to perform the appropriate work. Uh, if any part of the building is going to continue to be occupied, the state fire code requires them to maintain all the fire, uh, protection, uh, devices in the building and/or provide a plan showing how that will be handled during the building permit period. So there's this, uh, process for that.
Okay.
So number nine would read, if approved by the board, prior to the filing of the map, the applicant shall provide an engineering analysis and obtain a building permit and/or demolition permit for the.
Hold on, hold on, an engineering analysis, say it one more time. An engineering analysis?
And obtain a building permit.
Okay.
And/or demolition permit.
Ah, okay.
For the buildings encroaching over any lot line.
Okay. None of the lot line changes that you made to accommodate the, um, requirements of the site caused any additional encroachments, is that correct?
That is correct, no, no additional.
So you stayed away from any buildings as far as any, any adjustments to the lines?
That's correct.
Okay, and the three proposed buildings from IBM still have no encroachments, they are, they are, each of the three are fully located within one of the lots?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So Tom, this, then it's not the, once the building permit, engineering analysis is provided, the building permit is pulled, then it's not the town's purview other than to manage the building permit process to do anything?
Correct, correct.
All right.
They have one year.
On different buildings.
And they would have 12 months, okay. And you said prior to filing of the subdivision map as opposed to prior to final.
Correct.
Approval, okay.
Which is pulling the permit.
Correct.
Okay.
Right.
Gotcha.
Not doing the work, just having a permit.
Having, okay.
Okay. And that's a, you understand that condition, that's acceptable?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Um, I just want to make sure, uh, Tom, I, I had an additional condition from the original preliminary resolution regarding signage, and it looks like you added the word signage to the condition 4. Does that?
Yes.
So that is full, so that original condition, they've just been collapsed?
And there's also now a note on the map reflecting, um, the applicant with, at the direction of the town planner, they added several areas along 52 and, you know, the public roads that will allow lots to be able to share a signboard, et cetera.
Okay.
So that area is designated on the map, and it's a note, uh, on the map as well as we'll have some language in the agreement.
Okay.
That way some of the back lots would be able to have signage towards the front.
That makes sense, okay. Was there any other, I, I think you've gotten to the point of drafting the agreement, right?
Um, with.
The reciprocal easement agreement?
We have a draft of that.
I, I thought, okay, so I guess what I was going to say is, was there anything besides what's listed here, because it says stormwater, signage, comma, et cetera, was there anything else we should call out here that's come up?
No, I mean, the agreement has.
I know it's, I know it's just a draft, I, I understand it's not finished, but, okay. So nothing else we would adjust for here, though, right now?
Yes, okay.
All right, and you answered the firewall question, all right. Any other adjustments? Changes? Any questions from the applicant?
Not for me, you have.
Okay, Teresa, go ahead if you don't mind, the be it further resolved?
Be it further resolved that all terms and conditions of the amended negative declaration approved on October 4th were incorporated herein and made part hereof, and shall be a continuing obligation for the site, and be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the planning board shall cause a copy of this resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by John, and votes as follows. Uh, Jason?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Teresa?
Aye.
And myself, aye, the motion carries. And, thank you.
Thank you very much.